Good evening and welcome to the special select board meeting for Tuesday, I mean, for Monday, May 12th. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I called this special meeting because tomorrow is the town meeting and there was an issue in regards to the budget amendment that we warrant article that we had to do a little differently this year. Our attorney pointed out to us that there are, there is a change in the statute and we're supposed to be stating the school committee's original budget and then we need to amend it to what was the agreed upon. And Attorney Martel is here for a very short period of time because he's due at another town town meeting in a half hour and so he's here to answer any questions. Attorney, would you like to just explain why we are doing it a little differently this year from other years?
Well, the law to me is, says that you have to present the budget as requested by the school committee. Now, I don't know why, it hasn't been done in the past, it could be because the school committee never raised a point. But the school committee did raise the point this year, caused me to look at the applicable law and ruling from the Department of Revenue and convinced me that yes, the first motion should include the budget as requested by the school committee.
Okay. And so today we received the original, the way it was published did not, was not placed that way, so I understand-
That's okay, it's the motion, it's the motion that's made at the meeting that's important.
And so what we have in front of us is what we, oh, it is a little confusing, what we have, I guess you have to turn it upside down and around to get it to look-
You can put it in shorts.
Yes, and-
Is there something else to say today?
No, just hand it out.
Yeah. And so this is what was published, but what we need to do is, I guess, the motion on the floor has to be one way and then we have to amend it to what we had originally intended, which was listed in the warrant. So Attorney Martel is here to ask any questions and we do have, and I believe it's page two and three, and we also have the amendment, the motion to amend that we have to do.
This was just handed out. Do I have a copy?
Yeah, right there.
No, this is my stuff. Is this new?
That's it.
I thought, because in the afternoon I had Debbie sent out because I had made some adjustments here on the narrative for the amendment. And I thought she'd sent it out when I was out of the office when, it may not have happened.
I mean, Marie, I could, I know it's up to, to the town moderator, but I can't imagine we need to reread this entire thing. If all we're going to do is read the article as it is, the article's going to be seconded, then somebody can move to amend the Article VII by reducing the school budget from thirty-one million, five twenty-two, one nineteen to thirty-one million, three sixty-seven, six sixteen. And I can't imagine we need to reread this entire article again. But as I said, it's up to the town moderator of what he's asking us to do. The key is going to be, he's going to ask for this in writing. So we need to be prepared to have this, a copy of this to give to the town clerk and/or the moderator at the time we make that motion.
I mean, that makes sense to me, but I don't speak for the moderator.
Right.
Essentially, all you're doing is, I move that the previous motion be amended by increasing the line item, or decreasing the line item for schools by one hundred and fifty-four thousand, five oh three, down to thirty-one, three sixty-seven, six sixteen.
I just, but I would ask that we notify, and maybe I'll do that since I'm making the motion, notify Mr. Callecon advance that as soon as the motion is made and seconded, that he'd recognize us for purposes of this amendment?
Yes, I think, I, oh no, I didn't cover this in my email last week. Yeah, I would definitely tell him about it.
And what the, when Mark reads the Article VII, it's not going to be what they see in their warrant? Or it is?
No, it's not.
Correct.
The one that went out and published is not what he's going to be reading.
Right, I can point that out.
No, the amendment will be there.
Correct.
The amendment will, but-
Is what's in the warrant right now.
When he first reads it, it's going to be different from what people are going to be seeing. And then, so we need to have the motion on a separate piece of paper and then-
No, we don't need to have the motion on a separate piece of paper.
I would think we need to hand the amended motion, the motion to amend.
Actually, I think the main motions are also on separate pieces of paper, aren't they? I don't know, what is it, doesn't a town clerk collect those?
But she has the warrant that she works from. The only thing is, if to the extent we read something different from what's printed in the warrant, I assume she'll amend what's written, what she has, based on what we read.
Okay, so she works off the same list of motions that we have?
I hope so. Steven, can you, will you make sure we bring a couple extra sets of motions?
Paul?
Dave, can you go backwards in the process of the, did the schools ask you about this or did they direct it to you that this was, or did they go to the town manager? How did it work?
Well, I rendered, I also represent the town Ludlow, and the same question came up out there. And I studied it and came to the conclusion that the first motion should be in fact to the budget requested by the school committee. Then I got an email, I think, yes, it's an email from Marie Doyle to all of you folks and Steve on April 2nd. This is just a reminder that the school department's budget must be presented on the town warrant and at town meeting as voted by the school committee. She says it must be presented on the warrant, I'm not sure I agree with that, but the first motion does have to ask for the amount that they asked for.
Okay. I didn't see that email. Was it addressed to all of us though?
Uh, yes.
No, it's okay, don't worry about it. I don't see it in my emails, but, okay. Because I'd like to point out some protocol to the superintendent of public schools that they have council, we have council, that should have been directed to our town manager as I think as a matter of protocol.
It was, Steve did get a copy. It was the select board members, the school committee, Tom Maza, and me.
I understand that, but I'm just saying as a matter of protocol, that should have went to the town manager first.
Well, I think we received it and we're not here just- I mean, we followed up, I talked to CFO and talked to town council after I received the email about, you know, is this correct and what should we be doing? And, you know, it's, it is a matter of law that we should be doing it this way. And so once we kind of drilled down into what it all meant, we did follow the opinion that he had given to town Ludlow, which is obviously the, what we're doing now. So, but I agree with you. I wouldn't, well, I wouldn't email the school's attorney directly.
Correct. But that's my point, thank you.
One of the things that we need to do is have the, make sure that the finance committee, who's obligated by charter to act and recommend on each one of these, these articles that spend money, to make sure that they comment on which version that they're approving or recommending or not recommending.
You know what, Mark, you got a good point, because on Article VII, the, what you're going to read, it says recommended by the finance committee and they didn't recommend that, they recommended what's going to actually be the amendment.
Well, and I think that needs to be pointed out.
No, wait, down here it says that they recommend that.
Well, but in fact, correct, what, in fact is, in the published warrant is what was recommended by the finance committee and that's going to be the amended motion. So, yeah, I think it's important that we, that we include that.
And also contact the finance committee and let them know exactly what's happening on the floor. Any other questions for Attorney Martel?
Yeah, and we should note that this amendment, and we tried to identify this in the narrative, is really a pro forma amendment, as, as town council noted that under the law you're supposed to do this, but then the select board does present the budget to town meeting for consideration, presents its budget, even though you have to tell town meeting that what the school committee approved, ultimately you're presenting your own recommendation, which is why we have this, kind of the substitute amendment, if you will. The school committee understands this, I think they are supportive of this process, now that they, now that we're all on the same page with the process. And I guess it is really just to make sure that what the town meeting is considering is what the select board recommended and the school committee understands that.
But Stephen, just to be clear, the process is, there's a motion and then there's an amendment. We vote on the amendment and then we vote on the motion as amended.
Correct.
The amendment can fail.
That's correct.
In which case then, I think it behooves the, the select board to figure out whether we then support the unamended motion, which is the town budget. And I say that publicly because we may, you know, I don't know what's going to happen, but we may need to take a position on the unamended motion. And I for one believe that we, we, at least I support the amended budget, not the, not the original budget, and I think it's important that we, we comment about that. And in fact, be prepared to support the amendment. I don't know, you know, with, with the stories and rumors and theories of what's going to go on at the town meeting tomorrow night, you know, we may want to make sure that we have a compelling argument for this amendment. And as far as I know, the compelling argument is it balances the budget, but I don't know what other compelling argument they may pick.
Well, in terms of the position of the select board and the school committee, and I don't, because you don't know what's going to happen until you're actually in the room, but my discussion with the superintendent and other district officials, as well as some school committee members, is that they understand what the purpose is, the adjustment of one hundred and fifty-four thousand was something that had been discussed, and while they didn't vote to agree on it, they all understood the issue. And it really is an adjustment to utility costs that are, twenty thousand is the utility cost based on possible natural gas savings at Williams Middle School. And then the remainder is electricity at the high school, which is something we discussed early on in the budget process, and that money was always going to be funded through free cash, because the cost of electricity for the high school is not really known because of the spike in electrical use at the beginning of the, when they first took occupancy of the building. And so once they get a, you know, many months of routine history on the school, they'll know what the operational numbers are going to be going forward. So they're all, they all understand this, they expect this, and I think that they will support the amendment. So when we go through to deliberate the budget that is the select board's budget, everyone will be on the same page.
I'd like to pause this conversation. I know Attorney Martel has got to go to a town meeting. Do we have any last minute questions for Attorney Martel before we let him go?
I do, I do want, would like Attorney Martel to address the issue of the demolition committee.
Yes.
Which is Article fifteen, maybe? No, twenty-eight, sorry, Article twenty-eight.
Yes, I mean, actually, the, I sent you an email on this at the end of last week on Friday afternoon. And it turned out that there was language in the article as it was voted on at the town meeting in two thousand and six, that talked about the composition of the demo committee. Remember when we were together maybe a couple months ago, we thought we were kind of dealing with a clean slate on what the committee would be composed of and how they were, how their terms would line up? Well, Kathy Ingram went through the clerk's records and I looked through my own handwritten notes. And if you can believe that by a vote of eighty-seven to eighty-six, there was a motion to change the name of the body that would rule on the demolition delay bylaw from the historical commission to the demolition committee and have it be comprised of six members, two from the Long Meadow Historical Commission and four appointed at large by the select board. Now, Kathy and I agreed that since it was in the clerk's records and it was, which were supported by my own personal notes, that we should treat that as actually being in the bylaw, although when it was transferred over to the bylaw book, that wasn't there. So you can either leave it that way, and I sent you the, what it, what it would say, or if you wanted to have the bylaw be the way you had talked about it a couple months ago, I remember particularly Mr. Grant saying he thought that it would be best to have it be five members instead of six, so there would be no tie votes. I mean, if you're, if you want to do that, then I've given you a language here on how to do it. If you're comfortable leaving it the way it is, well then you can leave it the way it is.
By leaving it the way it is, you mean we would not, we'd withdraw Article twenty-eight?
No, because there's two other parts to Article twenty-eight after the-
So, you're, in other words-
The terms, the terms and the, they have to meet at least once a year. Those are two new parts that weren't even in it at all the last time around.
So you're saying cross out amended to get rid of number one?
Well, if you're okay with the bylaw as it looks like it was passed, then there's no need, and if you're okay with that, then you don't need to do paragraph one of Article twenty-eight, because you have, you already have a demolition committee consisting of six members instead of five. So-
But if we read all three, then we would be making several amendments.
Right, if you're, if you read all three, you would be substituting paragraph one for the existing bylaw.
Can you say again what currently it is, Dave? Six members, there what?
Six members, um, six members, two members of the historical commission and four at large, not currently members of the historical commission and appointed by the select board. That's what it says now. I think if you look at the email I sent out on Friday afternoon to, oh, actually, that one just went to Kathy.
Yeah.
Um, but no, there was a separate one I sent to you, yes. Friday at four forty-five, I sent it to, I'm sorry, I sent it to Debbie, Steven, and Paul. And I would have assumed that they got four.
Fester.
Pardon?
Paul Festerzak.
Yes.
So if we want to change it so we're not affecting, we'd have to amend Article twenty-eight to not include number one.
Why would we do that at this point?
Okay.
I mean, I'm not saying not to, but why would we?
Oh, you're saying why?
Why would, why would we, now that we have this written and published the way it is, why would we take the act of now not reading paragraph one, explain to everybody what's going on with a system that in fact has minimal effect, just changes it from six people to five people? And, and put, and in fact now puts it into a document where it's, and prior to this, it was, it was based on notes by the town clerk in our town, town council.
Kathy Ingram was not the town clerk at the time this was done, so-
Yeah, that's right, fairness to Kathy.
Yeah, so there's no, we don't, the answer to the question is how did this not end up in the general bylaw book? We don't know, I mean, she wasn't here at the time. So I think that to answer your question, this was brought to my attention by a member of the demolition delay committee, and they intend to be there to ask for some kind of amendment or withdrawal of the article. So we'll have to deal with it one way or the other. When I went back and looked at the LCTV YouTube video of the meeting, it really, it really seemed like a, well, if it's a blank, the, the five-member composition was done in the context of there really is no set number right now, and if you're going to set a number, don't set an even number of members, set an odd number, that was what Alex's comments were. I think had everybody known that the existing bylaw says six members, it was already approved by a town meeting, and there is, really is a blank slate, I perceived from the conversation that that would have, that that five-person amendment probably wouldn't have happened, because I don't think anybody saw a compelling need for it one way or the other. So we should probably defer to what town meeting has already adopted in terms of the number and appointment of the members, and really just make the change that we sought to make when we started this process, which is applying term limits.
I, so you're saying that the motion that I suggested in my email of last Friday afternoon is the motion that should be made, which would strike the existing six-person commission and replace it with the five-person commission and to add those other two paragraphs?
No, I'm saying we should keep with the six, well, I don't, and then if you-
Well, I mean, it's, I guess it's the selectman's call, I don't know what-
But right now, what is written in the warrant includes changing it to a five-member.
Correct.
So in order to change this, there has to be amendment on the floor to take it back.
Correct. I mean, there is a lot to be said, as Mr. Gold suggested, to just do it the way I suggested.
Was there anticipation this is going to get hung up?
Like I said, a member of the demolition committee contacted me and said they intend to speak on it, to speak against it, or they, they want to maintain the, the membership, the, the composition of the committee they have now.
They want to have a six-person-
But do we have even four appointed? I think we only had two or three people appointed now.
There was only three.
Yeah.
Which is a better reason than making five instead of six.
And I'm not, this isn't for Attorney Martel, so I don't, but this is for the board. I would, I would suggest that, you know, we're talking about a committee that is never met, okay? And the membership was just recently updated. We don't even have two members from the historical commission on there that we know of.
Yeah, we do.
Who's that?
I was told there were two that have in place. I don't know their names right off the bat.
So to my point, this might be one of those articles that you could pull off and put on the town meeting in the fall and really figure out whether it's five or six or seven members that need to be on it, as opposed to trying to, I'm just saying, we're wasting, not wasting time, I think it's going to be very confusing to people if you say part one of the, of the warrant article is not what we want, we want to go back to what's originally written. And since something is already originally written, and there really hasn't been a need for this committee to me, we actually have a committee in place right now. So if there was an issue with the demolition committee, they, they do, they are formed. And I think it's something that, you know, rather than trying to confuse people at town meeting, because it will get confused in one way or the other, is maybe it's something that's pulled and put on in the fall, since it's not a precedent issue. Watch, four things will pop up and be on the computer. But I, I just don't think it's that precedent of an issue that we got to, I, I think it's, I think it's something to discuss, should a committee be made up of an odd and even number? I think that's a very valid point, so that you, you know, you might not have a tie, but that's assuming all the members are there at every meeting, that you vote on something, so you can ever be assured.
If you do nothing and you put it over till the fall, you have a six-person committee.
Yeah. I mean, suddenly come up, say a house on- Before nineteen oh one, or whatever the cutoff is, comes up and they want to demolish it, you get the committee together, if they didn't have enough members to meet a quorum, then we would appoint, then we, you all would appoint members to the committee and you would have a six-person board, four and two, and they would meet. The only thing that cleans up is that, once you appoint those people, they're on for life. And that's the only thing that's, that's, and that's where the six versus five thing, it does add confusion, I agree with you, especially if someone from the demolition committee gets up and says, this is ridiculous, we shouldn't be doing this, and kind of adds. So there, I think there may be some justification to maybe deferring to the fall on this. But really, it was really just a housekeeping issue, because there was never term limits put on the committee in the beginning.
Or we could do, Mark's suggestion was just let it roll and let the town meeting decide if they're going to change it.
And someone-
Or let it pass.
Someone from the demo committee can get up and amend it on the floor and say, I, I vote to amend the thing and say this, and there you go.
Yeah.
It's always six and one, have to, depends how much time we're going to spend talking about those stuff.
It'll be about ten o'clock tomorrow night, so you'll have plenty of alert people.
At least.
Pretty optimistic.
Yeah, we can make that a game day decision probably, depending on what the hour is.
Any other questions for Attorney Martel? Okay, well, thank you very much for coming.
Okay, my pleasure. See you tomorrow.
Marie, I just wanted to move back to Article VII and just determine two things. I just can envision that it, that it doesn't go very smoothly, since the whole issue of the school committee budget is likely to come up, or is supposedly going to come up for, for other issues. And, you know, I, I think it's important that we be able to document, Stephen, that, you said the, the reduction of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and three dollars, and what those, what those exactly items were that caused that reduction?
Well, I think that we're talking, what was put, and again, I'm having trouble seeing where this is, was the description of how we, this is the utility costs. I'm not sure if we should go into that much detail.
If you go, if you flip over to the last, if you find Article eight, the narrative portion, which is intended to inform the person making the motion of what the purpose of it is, and the voters, explains that it is an agreed upon amount that addresses currently unknown one-time utility costs.
And so that's on top of page three in italics.
Yeah. I think, to be honest with you, Mark, I think to get into greater level of detail is another thing, like Paul suggested, adds to confusion. And knowing what we know maybe out there on town meeting, I think we want to keep it as simple as possible, since it's something that the school committee is aware of, they, they all know it's kind of a part of the, they didn't really vote to agree to it, but they all understand that it's something we have talked about, and it is not, it's not the amendment that we, that people are, are expecting.
I hear you, but I'm reading this, and somebody's going to say, ask a question, and I want to be able to speak, you know, to, to the, the issue of why, I understand why we're doing it, but I want to make sure I understand that, that this, what this one hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and three dollars comes from, that's all I'm, I'm asking for. And, and by the way, for the record, I believe that the school committee may vote, or at least members of the school committee may not all stand up in unison and, and support this. So I think we need to be prepared for-
Yeah.
Can I, what does it matter where it comes from? When the town manager made the recommendation to the select board of a, of a budget, that number was in there. And I'm, I'm talking politically speaking right now, because there's obviously a political agenda for the schools to do this. It's not something as simple of as we just want it read. I mean, there's, after all these years of, I can't recall us ever doing it this way. Again, it, it was just an oversight, it was an oversight. But in years where we really had battles over the budget with the school department, then I'm sure it probably would have been coming more handy. But what does it matter to where it comes from in your opinion, Mark, because, in terms of what you're saying, because the town manager made a recommendation to the board. And even though the town manager is going to say, well, these are the, the specifics, you don't necessarily know that, other than the explanation that's given in here. So I guess that's, that's the answer, right? I mean, I mean, this is a political issue in the sense of, for some reason, the school department wants it read this way this year and going forward. And you're going to read it the way it is. I guess where the money came from is really of no consequence, other than the fact of if someone gets up and makes an amendment. But if it's in the explanation, then I don't, I guess you can personally attest to it, but I don't think we necessarily need, need to be, because the, we voted on a budget that was delivered to us that had that cut already in there, or, yeah, cut in there, a reduction, whatever you want to say. But I, I'm assuming, you mentioned that there was an understanding.
Yeah, I think insofar as there's a controversy to be had here, which I think, when you say political question, it's what's going to generate controversy on the floor of town meeting, where the funds are, are going to come from, or where people perceive the funds to be coming from, probably does make a difference. The hundred, like I said, twenty thousand was made at-
The Williams Spoiler.
Right, the, the select board made that adjustment. The remainder, one hundred and thirty-four and change, is the electricity for the high school. That's something we talked about during budget deliberations, we've talked about it when we've met with the school district administration, school board members individually are aware of it. So in terms of a, I guess from what I understand now, a majority of the school committee, this is a non-controversial item. It may not be unanimously non-controversial, but the school committee understands this, this is not, like I said, it's non-controversial for them, they have understood that the utility, especially the hundred, the bigger number, the one hundred and thirty-four thousand, that was always, we will pay for that through free cash appropriation, once we figure out what the actual number is. That wasn't, we're not going to give you the money, it was, we just don't want to tie up levy on an unknown number. So that was, so really, if you look at, what's the overall budget reduction for the schools? It's twenty thousand, which on thirty-four million, thirty-one million? It's $20,000, which on 34 million, 31 million, is really not all that much, and they under, then they understand that, you know, the scale of this and the perspective of it.
And I think the arguments for the amendment are the arguments we have for our budget, that we've worked together on a balanced budget, and we started out, in a deficit of 600, and this was one of the deficits that we decided we can really work together to decrease the utility costs for the schools, because the high school is showing a very large number, and that's because during building and renovations, that really increased the utility cost. But working together, I think we can really bring that down. So I think, no matter what, that will be our discussion and explanation, which will be defending the budget, which is the balanced one. And hopefully, in regards to the schools asking this year, and they haven't asked last year, I think Attorney Martell's saying that he did research for Ludlow, and this is coming up, I think we never realized we weren't supposed, we were supposed to be doing it this way all along. So in some ways, it is housekeeping, and we're learning how to do this, and next year the warrant will be correctly placed, and we'll, we'll have better explanations than we do. So it is a little bit of a bump or hiccup, but I think it still is the same budget, which is a balanced budget we've been working on. Any other questions on how we're gonna handle the motions, or recommendations on tomorrow?
Yeah, what was the final word on-
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, I don't know, unless we wanna move to whether we're gonna remove it, or just let it ride. My, I agree with Mark, I say let the town meeting decide if they want to amend that, or if it can go through, because I don't see why we need to wait another six months to-
So we're gonna read it as is?
Unless the, there's a motion on the floor to change it. And I'm talking about this, this board, if they wanna move to change it in any way.
What did you say?
Said, "Not for me, no."
Okay.
What about 29? We're not gonna read this, obviously.
We can ask the moderator, to dispense with the reading, as long as it's published with these same words.
I don't know, your name's next to it, Richard.
Yeah, I know, that's why I was saying, we're not gonna read this.
Well, actually, isn't it supposed to be Walter Gunn? Doesn't the planning board bring that article?
Yeah, and they're gonna have a substitute amendment. I think what you're probably do is waive full reading, and then, I don't know if the moderator recognized, I don't remember how this went last year, but if the moderator recognizes the chair of the planning board to introduce a substitute amendment, they have, you know, we went out, the summary of the substitute amendment was in the back of the warrant, and so they'll have the actual language, it looks like this, and then they'll get up and offer it, so I, I'm gonna guess, Richard, I think that you would just-
Just, just waive-
Request, request the moderator waive full reading.
And if he, and if he says no, then I'm going right up over the top.
Yeah.
Like a Iambic pentameter, or something like that.
I'd be here, I'd be here the whole mic going through this. And somebody asks me a question, what an RDM and OMMMD is, and all that, yeah, okay.
We'll tag team it out.
Yeah. There'll be a lot of tagging on that.
All right, any other questions? I guess we do need to touch base with the moderator first thing, about those two amendments, and how we're gonna handle them, or let him know at least, and we need to have that first one in writing. Any other questions on the warrant in tomorrow's? Okay, 'cause we also have another attorney here to speak to us, Gordon Quinn.
Just one more item, I, as past practice, I do have a budget presentation, powerful presentation to present to town meeting, summarizing the select board's budget. It'll look very similar.
Laser light show.
Yeah, it'll look similar to the one that you saw before.
And then I do know that I think there will be an attempt to move up an article at some point in time, other than that, things should go fairly smoothly. I did ask, wanna ask one question, though. If Mr. Grant's unable to be there, did we wanna split up the-
We can do it tomorrow night.
We'll just decide who's gonna handle what. All right, and so Attorney Gordon Quinn is here to discuss any questions we might have about how we can do the town manager evaluation. I know there was discussion on what could be an executive session, what had to be in regular session. He sent out a written opinion, and then we opened it up for any questions, anyone who wanted to call the attorney and ask him further, and I also asked him to come here tonight if there were any questions before we went ahead and scheduled that.
The only, can I have one question?
Yeah.
The only question I have is, and this was something that was sent in 2011, to the, the only thing I don't know is, did it go directly to the, all the board members, or just to the chair, or? Because I, I can tell you, in 2011, we did the evaluations, the way we were talking about them at the last meeting, and I thought it was under the guidance of our, not you, but our Sullivan and Hayes, because of what was going on at the time, and that's the way we were handled. But I thought it was, that it was as recent as 2011 that we were working with your firm about, that things were done in executive session, and the only thing that was brought forward in open session was the compilation, so to speak, and the narrative that was delivered to the town residents of, of the evaluation.
I think the only way to, the only way how I can respond, basically, is that I, I know that, at the time, the opinion went to the, then, the chair of the select board, and I, my, my belief was, I thought, and again, I wasn't part of, individually, as the attorney involved in that particular matter, but I thought that it was intended to be distributed, or to be discussed with the other select board members. So that, that was my understanding. I, I can't comment on, on what happened after that.
Okay, 'cause we handled, and again, that year, I know we handled things very differently, 'cause we had some other things going on. Well, differently than what we're now being told is the way to do it, so. That's why, that's why I had a question about it, was, we were operating under the guidelines from your firm, another attorney, but from your firm.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay. That's the only question I have, he answered, so.
Any other questions for the attorney?
No, I just, no real question, I'm just puzzled at the whole process, it would seem that, first of all, it would seem like the select board would sit down and have a conversation, even if it's in a negotiation fashion, on the grades, and the statements, et cetera, that's put forward, before you actually finalize a document. That would seem reasonable to me, under any personnel management system I've ever dealt with, but in here, it's just boom, and it's done, with no meetings, and no negotiation period, or anything else. So it's, I think it's a poor way to do an evaluation, first of all. It's a very poor way to do it. I've never, never seen evaluation process going like this before. And I guess it's been accepted across the Commonwealth that this is the way they do it, and somehow they must've found ways to deal with it differently than we're dealing with it.
Well, you know, it certainly makes for, you know, it's a cumbersome process, because of the open meeting law. But I, I think, as, as we pointed out in, in our memo, that, you know, in 2010, the open meeting law was amended, and so that any discussion by the board or board members regarding the, you know, competency of an individual, in this case, you know, evaluation of the individual, in this case, the town manager, has to be, you know, it's, it's a matter that has to be subject to, to open meeting. So, you know, I know the attorney general has issued some guidelines about how to, about sort of giving an overview of the process that towns can follow, which would involve things like, you know, individual board members preparing their own evaluations, but then distributing them to one person, could be the chair or somebody else, for compilation, and then, to the extent that there has, that any discussion then ensues, over, you know, what should be in the, what we call the consolidated evaluation. Again, the open meeting law basically teaches that you've gotta have that discussion in, in open session. And, again, the, you know, as I said, a lot of these changes took place in 2010, especially on, with respect to performance evaluations, and whether they're open, whether they're public records or not. But, it is a some, you know, it is obviously a more cumbersome process than you'd see in the private sector, but that's, that's what the statute really mandates.
Well, yeah, it's, it's beyond cumbersome. I mean, that's, there's no doubt about it, that's, that's putting it gently. And maybe we need to internally change the way we do it, because I think, I think to have five select people send in an evaluation, and then that evaluation from those five, without any discussion, becomes the final document, is, could be unfair to the person being rated, maybe unfair to the five members, because there may be some thoughts that can be shared in that interim, in that evaluation-type mode, that could alter people's feelings. I think it's fair to everyone to have that discussion take place, and it, and I don't care if it's in open, or whether it's in executive session, we could have the same discussion, it doesn't really matter. But, it seems like our process this year has, we've not had that opportunity, it's not been made available. And I, I understand, you're not gonna change open meeting law, and I'm not going to either, so we have to deal with, I guess I'm more or less voicing the opinion that possibly there's a better way for the board to do the whole evaluate, evaluation, within the confines of the open meeting law. I, I just, I just think it's a horrible process, that five people sit in a cloakroom with a bottle of bourbon and do an evaluation on a person.
Oh, so not yet.
Okay, and they send it off to one person, and these things are all of a sudden slammed together, without any discussion, it becomes a final evaluation.
That's not the final evaluation, that's the working document. When we sit down to do the evaluation, we use that, but we're, we still have to create the document for the evaluation. Unfortunately, that now has to be done in open meeting.
Well, no, I don't have a problem with that.
Oh, okay, so we're still waiting to do the evaluation.
I don't think that had been transmitted.
Okay, we're, we're waiting to do the evaluation, that was just the, the compilation to begin the process, and so we have not, there's nothing that has-
'Cause that document sure came out like it was a final document.
That was a cut and paste, there was no inputs by anyone.
Right.
So now we are looking, now it was supposed to be on April 30th, and that's been postponed, and now we're trying to find the date in which we will have the, and right now, we're looking at June 4th, 'cause June 2nd doesn't work. It's the high school, June 3rd is the, unfortunately, we have 14 people we're interviewing, and for the committees, which I'm very happy, so right now, we're aiming towards June 4th.
I think, I think that what the contract calls for having the evaluation completed by the end of the fiscal year.
It just says during-
It was in advance, it didn't really give much, any detail that, does that mean, is that your interpretation delivered?
Just says, in advance of the fiscal year, subject to review.
Yeah, 'cause again, that, just as an open discussion, it seems like an odd thing, too, because actually, you're evaluating a person before they even finish the full year, which seems kind of odd to me, too. I mean, it's, it's a 12-month evaluation, not a 10-month evaluation.
Well, we're sort of at, it depends on what you consider the full year.
Well, the fiscal, it went to fiscal year.
It was April.
Yeah, 'cause remember, before, we couldn't do it, 'cause Stephen hadn't been here long enough, so.
So they're prob, and we'll be finishing the budget by tomorrow, and so that will be a little more, and so people might wanna add something to that report when we go to finish talking.
What I'm trying to bring out, though, is that the whole thing seems a little, just a little strange, seems like it's all rushed, and I'm not sure I understand why, that, I'm not even understand, I don't even understand why it's in the contract that way, Stephen, it was, it would seem appropriate to say that you'll have it.
It was our contract, not his.
Yeah, I know, no, but I'm just, I'm making a statement, I don't understand it. You know, it'd be honest to say that you're gonna have the 12-month, and then you'll have the evaluation done a month and a half thereafter, and then all everything brought together in a finalized form, that at least you capture that full 12-month period.
Richard, it was carried from, that was from the charter.
It was just-
When the charter came in, it was a way for the commission to sell that, the select board will review the town manager, and that was, that was, that was one of those things that was in the contract, that was never changed.
Right.
From renewal of the previous first town manager's contract, so I'm sure it was meant to say, "You're gonna do a review, that's how you're gonna, you know, you, because of the difference of how things work, and you no longer manage department heads type of things, so."
Right, yeah. Well, it's definitely something that could be improved on.
If you have any more case law that comes in, be sure to, as you see, this is gonna be a topic of interest for us for the next year, so, anything new, be sure to send it our way.
I sure will, yes, I will.
Whoever the chair is, we'll be sure to distribute it to everybody.
Gordon, is there, you know, there, there's also personnel rules, though, for example, if, discipline hearings don't need to be in open session, correct? So, at what point does the, does the employee have any opportunity to prevent open session in any discussions?
Well, when you mentioned discipline, there, there is, you know, that's one of the-
It's different from the performance, annual performance, I understand.
What the open meeting law says is, is when you're, when the public body is convened to discuss, you know, character, reputation, discipline, then that is a, that is a reason for going into executive session. However, as I look at the statute, the statute basically allows the, the individual, whoever that is, who's being subject to the disciplinary, you know, discussion, to be present during the deliberations involving that person, and to really have a, have a right to have it in, 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 in open session. But typically, that would be a reason for going into executive session, things like that. Contract negotiations is another reasons to go into executive session, and, and that doesn't really require the agreement of the individual, as, as long as the express purposes for engaging in contract negotiations, and that's also under the, under the open meeting statute. But again, as, as we talked about before, issues such as job, job competence, performance evaluations, that's, that's one of the matters or the topics that has to be, that has to be open to the public.
I mean, it's mentioned in the law.
It is.
It's very specific, that, that this is an open meeting issue.
Any other questions for the attorney? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon.
But it doesn't make it a good law.
Contact your state legislature.
Cam?
Those were the only two topics I had on for today's meeting, yes.
So there were no motions made to do anything? It's only a double check?
Yeah, it was just informational.
Just informational, thank you.
I have one question, you mentioned interviews. Have we publicly announced that we need applications for interviews?
For the committees, it's been on the website, but anyone else who wants to apply for any committees or boards, I think that's a good idea. Paul, please, go on the website, the vacancies are listed, and we would love to have you join us. It's a town that volunteers are very important for the boards and committees.
You're starting to report for the Republican, Mass. Live? We have, Ben will be covering the towns for Mass. Live, so.
Welcome. And were there any select board comments or questions?
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'd like to recommend, just make, if you can follow us up, Stephen, and make sure Debbie does get this electronically out.
Yeah, I, I thought that happened, I was, I was called away to a meeting the end of the day, and I will also make sure that if we bring printed copies, they are oriented the proper way.
Is there, is there a possibility of, since you're gonna have a PowerPoint, of taking this budget, and then the recommended budget, and flashing them up on the screen, if, if we need to?
We have slides that cover-
Okay.
This subject, not specifically.
I mean, if we get to Article VII, and if there's confusion, maybe it might be a benefit to throw something up there.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it, we can, I think if people haven't been paying attention, it can sound confusing, but this is as straightforward as they get, and it really is, you know, you know, a small amount of money, and that's why the school committee, like, not all of them, but I think a majority of them will understand that this is not, there's no need to manufacture a controversy where there really isn't one on, on this item. But you're right, I think we can certainly be ready to, to walk people through that. We've gotten feedback that, when we discussed with the school committee, quite honestly, we've gotten feedback that less was more, and to avoid creating, to avoid creating confusion, you know, talking about utility bills, and, you know, all this other stuff.
So we do have a motion?
Yep.
And we're looking for a second.
What's the motion?
To adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second.
I made the motion.
No, no, who's second?
Everybody.
Either one, Mark.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for joining us today.